And welcome to a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Pierce, ought to be held today, May 21st at time of 7:00 PM. And may I have a roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Mary Moore.
Present.
Mayor Prosem Pugiladevandis.
Present.
Councilmember Richard Ganda. Councilmember Sonia Edmondis.
Here.
Councilmember Britta Devina.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Delia.
Here.
Councilmember Roland Seboda.
Here.
And Councilmember Divina Rodriguez.
Present. Alrighty, we have a quorum, so let us stand for our invocation as well as pledge of allegiance. Is Ms. Faustal in the house? It's running late. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for today, thank you for your Son Jesus, and thank you for bringing us together to make decision for your community, God. We just thank you for all the blessings that you've given us and to our families, how you kept us well, God. And now let us impart this meeting, the words from this meeting, and do it for the best of our community. In Jesus' name I pray, in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, moving on to item four, action to consent agenda. Discussion and possible action regarding the minutes for May 14, 2019. This is an action item, entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
May I have a second? All in favor? Alrighty, give you a chance to peruse of the minutes, please. Any questions from the agenda? Comments? If not, we interchange a motion. I would need to entertain a motion to approve the minutes for May 14, 2019, please.
Make a motion.
May I have a second? All in favor? A show of hands, please. Yes. Motion carries, announce, please. Alrighty, five old business, moving on to six new business. Discussion and possible action regarding the relocation process and canopy process for Paula Manzanaris Business, Brisket Man Barbecue. This is an action item. Need to entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss, second.
All in favor by show of hands, please. Yes, ma'am. Who's gonna have a call?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, as you know, Paula's definitely placed on the agenda, so go ahead and review the relocation process and townkeeping question for relocation. And Paula is here to address your concerns to her.
Okay, yes, ma'am, Ms. Paula.
Okay. Do we start from the beginning, or?
Just start from what's that relates to your relocation process.
Okay, well, I came and asked about a restaurant that was being, that became available for lease. So, the tenant before me that moved was asked to remove a gazebo that was there. I'm moving Brisket Man Barbecue from the corner of Oak and Trinity to the corner of Flunt and Comal. So I came and asked to make sure that it was gonna be okay for me to move based on the prior tenant. So when I asked zoning for advice, he says bring me a drawing. So I brought a drawing and sketched it out and told him where I was gonna place the barbecue pit. I have a measuring tape on my phone as a realtor, so I sketched it all out and it's mapped out. It's the barbecue placement, it's gonna be 35 feet from the intersection, 63 feet from the stop sign. And the total building is finished three weeks from Comal to the actual building. I brought it back from zoning. Zoning denied it based on character. Barbecue pit cannot be placed there. And I asked, I came back and I did some more research. I researched the Texas legislation law on zoning. And I was told that the Bureau County of City of Pierce does not abide by any Texas legislation law. That I can take those to divine. And I don't understand what character, so then I requested a copy of your ordinance for commercial zoning of the City of Pierce, which is C-30. And it states there is no setback lines. No setback lines to me means that you can build from the property line or the 10 feet from the road all the way to the new apartment line. That's why I used it when I came and spoke. Your historical part of Pierce, your cricket, this Pierce, you're able to build from the sidewalk to the back if there is no setback lines. Front porch, a new business right here, it's brand new, it was approved. The right of an intersection, they're probably covered under the C-30 zoning. I'm placing a barbecue pit way past the Texas legislation guidelines, way past. There's no setback, it is considered zoning, commercial zoning. I'm just transitioning my business from this corner to that corner. I'm roosted, I didn't also know that there is no restrictions or no H2As here that could come in. That's why I came and asked. I was denied again by the zoning and also by the city manager. The city manager approved the little paper that I sketched out. He approved it for me to build a 4x4 slab, plant tree shrubs all around where my pit's gonna go. To me, that's a fire safety hazard. Half the time I'm out there cooking because my husband's asleep, I'm not gonna plant tree shrubs around the barbecue pit. And instead, we needed that to beautify Pierce. I don't understand, in between these couple of months that I've been going back and forth, the front porch got approved for a barbecue pit. Corner lot, corner business, not any different from my corner business that I was at and the business that I lease. And like I mentioned before, when I was able to speak a couple of months ago, I feel discriminated. You know, I don't understand why I'm being denied three or four months out over. And I was told by, also by between the city manager, the zoning, and Ms. Josie, that they're cleaning up Pierce, trying to beautify it, and they're starting with me. To me is, I think that if you're gonna change the city ordinance, that somebody here, you know, the council, somebody above y'all needs to amend and approve to change and amend that city ordinance before you start enforcing them on me. You wanna start changing and enforcing some new law on me that still hasn't been approved, that y'all aren't aware? You don't start with me until it gets approved. That's why I was upset, and I've been coming over here, I've already moved over there. I honestly think I just need a permit to build the canopy. The state's, the food inspector, state inspector, Ms. Genby, does not understand why y'all can't approve me. I was denied a canopy. Every taco stand here, every business that has a barbecue pit has been approved a canopy over the barbecue pit. So even if I move over here, now I'm violation with the state. And I was approved over here, but what's the difference? That's where I'm confused and I don't understand and upset.
Okay. Ms. Dujie, can we have your side of the story, please? An explanation?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, I would like to point out that Ms. Paula has not, as I know, put any application. Even as I know, there's no application. So when she said she was denied, I don't know what was denied. There's no application, even as I say.
Okay.
So she needs to make a.
Application for, for net?
For building applications.
Okay.
She needs to make a building application, and I told her, she actually told me on the phone that she would never apply for anything. She told me on the phone. So, we really don't have anything to talk about because there's no application that was denied or approved. She came, as you rightly said, to ask for what I would call pre-application advice. This is what I wanna do. Is it likely to pass or not? I told her to get a drawing, and she brought a drawing. And I looked at what she wants to do, and it's, I actually told her, give me one day so that I can go and look at it properly. I went round the whole of Comal, there is no barbecue pit on the whole of Comal. I told her it's out of character.
But there's, there's, what about, what, one second, keep from talking. There is Bobby's Taco. There's a barbecue, you mean, you mean within the front? Okay, in the front.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I know Bobby's Taco, it's right, and it has its 12 years.
It is way back, well, yes.
So for this one, jobs stays in the free, I'm a city planner, I'm a professional. I can only give her advice. If she wants to take it, fine. Right now, she has moved there without a permit. She has put up a sign without a permit. She is defrauding the city, if I may be very blunt.
Okay.
Just pennies, $65 is what the signed application is, not much. But the city works with all those permit applications. We're not a profit-making organization. So I don't know why she's saying she's discriminated against. When everybody comes here, they want to do a business. People come from San Antonio, what are your sign regulations? I tell them, they make an application. She doesn't want to go on that road. So I don't even know what to say, there is no application to review.
Mayor, may I say something?
Yes.
Getting back to you saying that she is in non-compliance right now. Anybody can move to any building. She's not operating right now, she's not open. That open sign's been there from the previous restaurant?
No, no, Brisket Man.
Okay, that's fine, but she's not operating right now.
But the sign is there.
That's fine. If they're, if they're opening a business and they're relocating from a place where she's already had a permit and they're going to another place, I think she would be in violation once she's opened the restaurant.
That's what I'm saying. That's what it was. I'm sorry to say, but.
Okay, and the other thing with the barbecue pit, there's no sign for them to put the barbecue pit. That restaurant's been open three or four different times with a barbecue pit in the front, twice within the last year.
Not last year, I've been here, I've worked more than a year here, there was no barbecue pit.
When was Nicole's restaurant open with the barbecue pit? And the reason why you haven't submitted for a permit is?
I think the application, because the last time I came when I spoke, and I left the meeting, they asked him, what does she need, why is she here? It was an application for a permit to build my slab. Not a permit, I could be here with no knowledge of what to do, so I come and ask y'all for advice on what I need. Okay, he never told me I needed an application. He told me he needed a drawing. I did, I had my application occupancy over here, so when I come, I come in here as a taxpayer and as a business owner for guidance. Okay, I was told when I came and spoke for those three minutes, somebody I want to hear, I was told I needed an application if I was gonna do the application for my permit. Okay, that's when he called me, what permit? To build the slab. Okay, I'm not gonna build a slab 4x4 when my pit's bigger than a 4x4. That's what's it, I'm not gonna do it. I'll just wait for when I get put on the agenda, and it took two months to discuss this. If I was told I needed a permit to transition into business over there, so y'all can go and inspect the building or whatever it is, then tell me that. I came in here and asked for advice, I'm considering this building, I've got two weeks to make a decision because two police officers want it and another taquilla wants it. And I wanted to jump in there because my business demands a little diner restaurant and we have a lot of catering, a lot of business, that we would benefit from that location. So I came in here and when I was shut down and denied, had they told me $65 for a permit and then we can talk? I would've done it. I would've done it, but there's no communication. And I went through Mr. Uche, I went through the city, I begged to speak with the city manager, I spoke with Josie, I spoke with Starr, I spoke with Crystal. Ultimately, no one would help me. Look at my, look at last, when I came two weeks ago, how my application was. I come here to ask for help, I expect y'all, this is what y'all do? Tell me what I need to get done to transition, we're not operating. It's a mess, the restaurant's a mess, and I'm willing to fix it because it's what I need. So if I need a permit to start the process, to get a pit built for someone to inspect it, then tell me I need a permit before you can even begin operations to get started. I came in and asked, not for a permit, what are the guidelines as far as putting the barbecue pit inside? There's been several businesses, maybe not in the last year, but in the last several years, that Buenos Aires, the dense barbecue, they all had barbecue pits in the same place, they all had canopies, and I'm being denied there was gazebos before the lady got taken her gazebo down, prior to me coming in. When I saw her gazebo get torn down, that caused you to leave, I questioned before I took the lease, is it gonna be an issue? Before I signed the lease, I took the chance. Because I, after I started researching and asked for copies of your city ordinances, when they told me that y'all don't follow Texas legislation law, but divine does to go over there, I knew that somewhere, if I continue doing research, I will find answers, and I know that that's probably not correct.
Question? Yes.
First of all, I'd like to apologize if there's been some miscommunication, but I think you should fill out an application as soon as possible and maybe take it again to the zoning board and maybe we can, maybe they can consider a variance for having a canopy on there. But first, I think what needs to be done at this point is actually fill out that application as soon as possible. So, I mean, I understand, you're a business owner, you don't work, you're not making any money, of course. I understand that. And I feel for you that there's been a lot of miscommunication. However, like I said, you know, please fill out that application as soon as possible in order, so we can review something, you know, we can.
Okay, so back to variance. I was, maybe I don't know the variance, but I was told the variance application would be more of an encroachment on another property. Is that incorrect? I didn't wanna apply for variance being that the lot or the location that I rented or leased out is the front. There's no approaching, it's not approaching on anything, it's not. The pit would be 10 feet away from your setback lines or 5 feet because it's on the side, 10 from the front? What is a variance, how does that work in my situation?
Let's do J-Half Saturday.
Yes, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, we had told Paula about the variance. When she says nobody told her to solve this application, that's a misrepresentation. I told her, and that's why I called her on another day when she says she's not going to make any application. We, I wanted to work with her, I said to her, the way you want to do this is not going to work. However, you have the opportunity to apply for a variance. That is where the council will sit on it and see the merit of your application and change it. And she said variance, that she needs to take a decision now, who are going to do with these clowns? She actually referred to the council members as clowns. I was horrified, maybe because she was upset, but that was what she said. So I left her. But I don't have to, I advised her to do a variance, but she didn't want to have anything. A variance is necessary if you cannot meet the zoning requirements. And it is not because, it is not because, let's say, there is hardship, you can't afford the application. They don't do that, that is not a reason why they'll give you a variance. A variance is strictly on the nature of the site. That is when a variance comes in.
Okay, Uche. Holian, you had a question?
Yes, are you applying the international code that we adopt? Are you applying the international code that we adopt?
No, that one is just normal, sorry.
Do you have, do you have policy on that?
Yeah.
And what is the date?
What is it?
What is the date on that policy?
It's, the last 2006 is the last time they reviewed it.
One of the things that I have been posting on also my other business owners, like, there's a lot of information that people do need to know, potential business owners, that, you know, first of all, we do welcome your business in town, we welcome any business in town. We would like more business in town, but we do have to have something in writing. From City Hall says, this is what is required of businesses coming into town. And then set up needs so that we can facilitate the process. Because, you know, my wife has a little business, we just started the process in a new building and stuff, and I felt like I had to jump a few moves as well because I didn't understand how things were working. So it took me a while to get that permit, whatever. But the thing is, is we can facilitate the process for potential businesses. We are business hungry in this community, we've got to have businesses. Our economy's not as doing as well as we're currently, and any potential business that's gonna bring us sales tax revenue, we have to pretty much look at the process and facilitate it as best as we can. And it has to go, if it needs to come back to council in terms of what do we do about certain aspects of regulations and so forth, then we need to care about it. I understand what your position is. It's to enforce, it's to let people know how they should set up business and what the process should be. However, it's taking this back and forth, in this case, in other cases that I'm hearing about. And I think we need to kind of tear it up, clean it up, bring it here if we need to. Let us have some input into it if we have to. And let's kind of get a little bit more business friendly with the situation.
I agree with you and I have started. If you have looked at the newspaper to, you say, I introduced the subject based on this subject you're talking about, you know, to create awareness. However, I have a problem with Pierce, mode of determination. A lot of people don't read the newspaper.
He told him that.
Many of you guys don't read the newspaper. So what mode, and I want everybody here to suggest, what is the most effective means? Is it Facebook, is it website, is it the city hall, is it the newspaper? Because people don't really read.
Well, I'm gonna tell you that most of us that are in business will wanna hear from the City Hall. And they put some together.
And they read. No, he's saying you don't read, he's trying to figure out the mode of.
Yeah, no, I understand, I had a conversation with him on the phone the other day with my business, and the comment he made to me, I said, what is it that people are not coming to Pierce about? He told me, because it's dirty and we're cleaning it up. That, you don't, what if I was somebody coming into Pierce? He needs to be, you need to be more friendly on the phone. This comment that she made, that she talked, said, call them clowns, so what? People are gonna call us all kinds of names. I got thick skin, I'm sure everybody else here has thick skin. This is part of being a politician, being in the political eye. If she calls me a clown, it ain't gonna bother me, sir. And that comment, I think it was unnecessary, and if you had a.
First of all, you can't reprimand him.
I'm not reprimanding him, I'm not reprimanding him.
Speak with Josie, and Josie.
I'm not reprimanding him, I'm just saying that comment that he made was unnecessary.
Okay, so, go back to you, Holian.
What I'm referring to, Ms. Dujie, is we can get some guidelines. We can get some written guidelines. We can get some written guidelines, you know, all you have to do is disperse those out to the business owners. And that's it. We will read whatever papers you send, if we prefer. And then that way we can understand, we have questions, we can come and ask you and so forth. There needs to be that kind of communication between the City Hall and the businesses.
One second. Go ahead. Speak.
Okay, this is you.
Yeah.
We've met before. What is it that you need from Ms. Manzanaris? Application?
This is the first thing, that's first.
Fee fee?
That's the application, the application comes with a fee.
Okay.
And it's not $65, it's for the signed application. It's different from your building, building.
Okay. Listen.
You done?
I had a question. Uche, I had a question in regards to the pit. What was the problem with it, the aesthetics, where it looks? Is that the reason, that's the reason you wanted shrubbery around it?
Yeah, just to hide it in some way, because I wanted to work with her, I didn't want her to, you know, go. Okay, so I was trying to find a way to make her still stay, but then again, still get the vista that I'm trying to achieve for that road, that's the original area, Comal and Oak Street. So even where she was on Oak Street, it was not right, but she was already there before I came. I didn't know what happened, you know, so I can't say anything about that. But now she's moving to Comal, I wanted us to try and shield that place. And she thought I was asking her for a building permit for the slab. The slab is just part of what she's going to do for that whole place, it's not, even the shrub is not part of the development. It's not the slab, you know. And there's something else I want to, that correct, the use. She may not even build anything, but use needs a permit. Just to come and use that property to cook, there needs to be a permit. And in the code, there's a place that states you can't have certificate of occupancy unless you have a building tag. It's from the building tag that you're giving that certificate of occupancy. So she still has to apply for the certificate of occupancy.
Sure, I have a question for you then. What is the ETA, or if she applies today or tomorrow morning? How soon can she be up and running with, you know, even if she has to go through a variance?
I can answer that question because it's, you know, it's not a straightforward question. We are assuming that the application is correct. We have to review the application, what if there's something wrong with the application? And I said, it's gonna take one week.
So, it's not even the problem of the pit being a fire hazard, or it's more the aesthetics?
It's cosmetic look, right?
Sorry?
The cosmetic look of it, that's what you?
Yeah, cosmetic aesthetic, you know. You know, if the smoke comes out and the health, you know, the food, the people that look through into health issues, food and drug or something, you say that they want her to put a canopy, that she has to have a canopy. Okay? And I don't know when she talked to Mr. Jackson, when Mr. Jackson was here, whether they agree that she's not gonna put this canopy. But I thought the canopy is a requirement by the health law. So I now don't even know whether she's not gonna meet the health law requirement or not. But my own, my own, my own business, it's just, it's not about that. Because if she puts a canopy, it's gonna be very hard.
So, can I ask a question? So, do we not have any kind of a handout as to the, yeah, the process or the requirements?
I'm producing it, that's actually why I bought those, that thing beside the flyer sheet. I got it because I want to put in a lot of leaflets. It's just that I've been very busy, comprehensive plan, hasn't even gone further than I should. But I want to put, what do I need a permission for? So, do I need a permit for this, why do I need a permit, what are the things that you guys are asking? So the public will have it there, you know, and then also on the website, you know. But also we need awareness creation, sorry.
Will you be available tomorrow that she can meet with you?
Tomorrow Wednesday?
Yes.
So I think if, nothing else, if we don't have a handout, or if you don't have a flyer or something that we can, I mean, put it down on a sticky, just one, I need this, two, I need this, three, I need this. Make it, you know, as simple as you can so that we can get this going and she can get her business up and running and just have another business.
Okay. So this item is tabled because we have nothing to. Approved because she hasn't submitted a table this item?
Yeah, I wanna make a motion. I wanna make a motion. I wanna make the motion that there's gonna be some conditions on the motion. I wanna make a motion because the circumstances that we have with Ms. Manzanaris going back forth for the past two months, and according to the comments that the council members made that the commission communication between the city and the citizens, I wanna make the motion that we approve the relocation and process canopy request with Paula Vella for the business Brisket Man Barbecue with the condition that she make the application and pay the fees before she opens. That's my motion.
I'll second that. All in favor? The word A. It passes unanimously, so you have to go with those conditions.
So fill out that application, okay?
Thank you very much.
Alrighty, moving on to item B. All righty, moving on to item B. Discussion of possible action to award general contract bid for the city of Pearson, annex building project funded through TML insurance claim. This is an action item, need to entertain a motion to, to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
All in favor? Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, as you know, we have conducted our fifth for the annexed building. We did have some vendors on this application. We have Robert Girdel with LNB and Mr. Rizarski that will go ahead and give the outcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council Roberts, yeah, with LNB. Good to see two council members that were the favorites for the council before. It's been a long, it's been a while, so congratulations. May sixteen, we opened bids for the city hall annex to receive three bids. The low bid was approximately nine hundred forty-nine thousand, with the third bid somewhere near one point three million. The low bidder, well, construction out of Lexington. They are a custom home builder, but they do a lot of wood framing, and they do have experience with buildings, structures, and the same type of square footage. We call several of the references, they have glowing references. So our recommendation is to award the contract, which is within the one point one, what's it, one point one million? We have one point one million dollar budget for this facility. The low bid was well construction at nine hundred forty-nine thousand one hundred seventeen dollars. And we are recommending to award the contract to well construction out of Lexington. There's any questions? Answer any questions?
Question, guys?
I have a question. Where are we in fund balancing accounts?
With the, right now with the insurance claim, what they have given us was one point... One point five, one point one five three million. And that was content with the building, with asbestos, with the demolition. So we've pretty much depleted all of that, the initial actual cash value. What we're going after with this building is the recoverable, the depreciation. What the insurance claim with TML had identified to us in order to get that, to recover the depreciation cost, we would have to implement the same building with the same purpose. We moved it from location as a special situation, they went ahead and approved it. So now we can currently, what is currently available for us to go ahead and recover is one point one million. To go ahead and redo, we'll create this annexed building for municipal court, and also to go ahead and hold our city council meetings. And as you stated, we have a nine hundred forty-nine thousand bid, which came under budget, which would help out quite a bit, and that's where we sit.
Correct, so they only pay you whatever the bid's gonna come in at, right? They don't pay you the one point one million?
Whatever, yes, whatever you need to recoup them. We've already had TML go ahead, once we award this, we'll go ahead and meditate and attend with us from the very beginning, to go ahead and upfront those costs as they come along, so we're not jumping into other funding areas like that, so.
Ma'am, the first phase, I would say this is the second phase that y'all are trying to build, right? The first phase was the park. Now, what is the status of the first phase? Is it totally complete? Or is it still in construction? Or do contractors still need work to be done? My understanding is that there's a lot of discrepancies there already. But as I said, I was not here, so that's what I'm asking.
We pretty much, for the structure, what we currently receive is seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand. We've expanded seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, so we have about twenty-four thousand to go ahead and finish up. We did some electrical, some small little minor things that needed to be done. As you know, we have our splash pad, we have the equipment, we have the playground equipment, the pavilion area, everything that has been done. We had pretty much estimated when we began the project, about four hundred thousand to be put into the park, and we've already expended five hundred eighty-four thousand. So we pretty much put more into it than what we anticipated, both the skate park and everything, everything went really well with that. We do have some little wooden room, twenty-four thousand to go ahead and recover those costs. Parks Department will continue with their budget to implement costs if needed. So everything will be reverted into the building.
And the bathrooms?
I'm sorry?
Bathrooms, have we renovated any of the bathrooms yet?
Bathrooms were not renovated. We pretty much are gonna repaint what we currently have right now, but the bathrooms were not done. We had done the parking lot. The parking lot was the one that was more of a priority. And then, of course, we'll be happy for the bathrooms right now. As we go into budget season, we'll go back and look at that, whatever's left over during the project. We can do a review of that. That's where we do that.
But according to the claim that y'all put, there's a claim that I received from y'all. Y'all were saying that y'all were gonna renovate the restroom, but I'm telling you, no.
There was different options for the priority. Those were all the options on here. As you can see, there's, it identifies, uh... It has quite a bit of stuff. It has the skate park, the splash pad, the pavilion area, the picnic tables. And it has a walking trail, which we haven't looked at either. The walking trail is in pretty good condition with some crap and whatnot. The restroom, because the restroom's already there. Depending on how we need to expand it, it was gonna cost quite a bit, whether we were gonna do another alternative to it. And like I said, we had estimated four hundred thousand, and we had already went way over on the five hundred eighty-four thousand. So that's where we're at. But again, with this building, is, we have the one point one million to recover, and we're already under budget here, so that can go back into the park.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, my question is, when you all came with that project, and you told us, you know, it's gonna cost us about four hundred fifty-four thousand, okay? And there was a plan presented to council, and the plan is beautiful, because y'all showed it on the screen. And it included restrooms, it included everything that is there. And why are we so much over budget and we still don't have restrooms? I don't understand this, in terms of, we, we offered bids and we took the bids accordingly, and then that was...
I think that went through, that was through council, that didn't go through us. We weren't part of that, that aspect.
Well, I'm asking, I'm asking.
And we, if you look at the, for the parking lot, I don't know if we had an estimated price for the parking lot, but the parking lot was a pretty substantial amount as well to get that. I know the priority was parking for the events and everything, we stretched on that.
I understand that, but that also included the parking lot. It was a finished model.
Now, we identified it, but we didn't actually identify this. We didn't have a great cost on the actual parking lot to see. It's all based on estimates. So that's where we're at. We also did electrical that we implemented for the park, the skate park, that wasn't giving off the lighting, so we had to do that as well. But it was all based on estimates.
Now, can we go back and do the restroom with you?
Yes.
The restroom money? With the rest of the money, we can go back and do the restroom with that?
Those were the two things on that list, was the walking trail and restroom.
Yes.
I actually would like to make a motion to go ahead and table this item until the council retreat, until we go over all of the budget, as far as each and one of these projects. Because I was, I was, I confer with a bunch of others that all that was included in there. And at this point, I don't really understand how much we spent for that parking lot. You know, because I never saw any figures there. I didn't see any other figures for anything as far as the welding with fence. I didn't see anything when I entered. And now you're talking about aesthetics, you know, a little uche. I don't feel that that was a, it was a subpar work that was done at that fence as well. It was, I mean, it was, it looks hideous, you know? So the fact of the matter is, what I would like to do, is go ahead and table this item, and go over all our, all our projects that are still open, and actually find out where everything was spent. Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Motion carries. All righty, discussion of possible action regarding resolution number two zero one nine dot zero five dot zero four, denying AEP Texas request to increase rate field with the Public Utility Commissions of Texas on May first, 2019. Action item, entertain a motion to discuss, please. Motion to discuss. All in favor?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, we were addressed with this issue from AEP, and we do have a representative here, Ms. Hazel Coles, to go ahead and go into depth with this. AEP has told us in regards to this rate change, that the commission is trying to increase across all the municipalities. So Ms. Hazel Coles, if you can...
Good evening. I'm here to talk to this, and I would do AEP customer service. And I'm here for you today to ask you to take action on the packet that the city received earlier this month. You're probably aware, yes, AEP did file for a rate review on May first. And it's been, since, our last rate review was in November two thousand six, so that's twelve years ago. But since the city has retained original jurisdiction, you have the option to deny, to approve, to suspend this rate review. You have thirty-five days from the day we deliver the packet to you. So you're close to approaching that. AEP is recommending that you deny the rate review. And you're gonna look at me and say, well, why did you file it if you're asking us to deny it, right? Well, the reason we ask you to deny it is because that will allow AEP Texas the opportunity to appeal it to the Public Utility Commission. And then what that happens is, the PUC, all the interviewers, as well as AEP Texas, will go to the table, review the whole packet, negotiate what's best for everyone, and then they will come out with one set of rates for all classification of customers for all AEP Texas. And that's the goal that AEP wants, one set of rates for everyone within the AEP Texas territory. So if I live in Divine Texas and I'm a residential customer, I will be billed the same as the person in Pearson, Texas, or Corpus Christi. So if we get the cities to deny, the PUC will review it all, and then come up with one set of rates for all of us. Any questions?
Have you read the resolution?
Have I read the resolution? Yes, sir. It sounded kinda contradictory, it sounds.
Yes, it does.
Okay, so, I mean, no, no, it's good. Right there where it says, request approval of its rate race is denied. And so that's where it's telling you, you're denying this.
I'd like to make a motion to deny the resolution number two thousand nineteen zero five zero four, denying AEP the request to increase the rate with the Public Utility Commission of Texas.
Have a second, please? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, thank you. All righty, we're moving on to discussion of possible action regarding possible grant application for Texas Water Development Board Grant. Intain a motion to discuss, please? All in favor? Discussion.
Madam Mayor, councilmember, this was placed on the agenda to go ahead and go over the Texas Water Board Development Grant process application. Mr. Councilman Roland Segovia had addressed this issue, trying to figure out what is our action to go ahead and go for these grants. I know we just passed out a sheet to reference to a meeting coming up in June for the Texas Water Development Grant. There are several opportunities out there. There's loans, there's grants. As you know, right now with our debt service funds, we currently have about twenty million that we have out in bonds and grants for USDK. So this is another opportunity to go out, to look what is available. Oh, is there anything that you would like to reference?
No, no, uh, thank you very much, Mayor, Council. Like I mentioned, the last council meeting happened to be at the Commissioners Court, when they were addressing the Texas Water Board Grant application that they were trying to apply for. So I thought it was a good idea to bring it to Pearson also, because you're in need of a lot of construction here. Water construction is in the city of Pearson. So that's really what it was. And I want to thank Robert for bringing this lifeline on explaining some of the issues that we have available for us. And I would just ask that we place this item in the agenda for approval to contract with a consultant. I guess the consultant was, oh my God, the... I have given, yes, ma'am. I have given Crystal, it was the consultant that the county had gone with, was Teherina Galvan Lawrence, LNC, to do the actual application. The reason that the name was not put on there, Madam Mayor, was because there was a prior engagement from the city of Pearson back in twenty-eleven. Okay, the city of Pearson was engaged with another firm, but that agreement has expired, it was for five years, it expired in twenty-sixteen. So right now, we have no engagement in negotiation with any consultant.
And this is the financial advisor that you were referencing?
Yes, yes, ma'am. So that'll be my motion that I made to go out and ask Teherina Galvan Lawrence, LNC, as financial advisor for the city of Pearson, for a possible grant for the Texas Water Board Development Board.
What's the cost on that?
It's free. It's how they get, if they get a grant, then they get paid by the grant.
Yeah, there's nothing...
There's no cost to the city.
Other question, do you think they might be available to come and do a presentation?
Yes.
Maybe before we make a motion to approve them?
Oh, yes. Well, the way, my understanding was, when I was there at the Commissioners Court, was that you need to engage with them before they can come and give you an official opinion. Okay, and that's what I learned at the Commissioners Court.
They have got up a presentation before, so we're gonna talk to them and provide a presentation.
So, yes, you're correct.
So the motion is to have them come in to do a presentation?
To presentation, yes. Teherina?
To engage with them prior to commitment.
Prior to a commitment?
Yes, yes.
I'll second that. There's a motion, anything? All in second? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All righty, moving on to E. Discussion of possible action regarding resolution number two zero one nine dot zero five dot zero five, to approve an increase in the monthly contribution to the Texas Emergency Service Retirement Systems on map of the Pearson Volunteer Fire Department. This is an action item, need to entertain a motion to discuss, please? I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Madam Mayor, councilmember, as you know, we had the Pearson voluntary fire department retirement pension plan that did not pass previously. I have the fire chief here, and he can go more into depth about what the pension plan was, and then I'll agree afterwards.
Council, here, just a little breakdown on some of the things that we, as a fire department, have actually saved the city this year and this year. And then also where we are currently on the budget. So really to talk, just alone in bunker here, the fire department members purchased twenty-eight thousand dollars in bunker here this year. With money that we collect and donations that we give, and fundraisers that we raise, twenty-eight thousand dollars worth of it. And then, on top of that, fifteen thousand dollars through a grant, through the Texas Forest Service. And we're also saving the city twenty-five hundred dollars worth of internet for the year. We're paying zero on internet, what we were paying twenty-five dollars a month previously. And then also, we're saving three thousand dollars on insurance, on TML insurance that had been charged at a different rate, and it's been corrected, and it's actually paid through a grant now, thanks to Texas Police Services. Also, at the end of last year's budget, we added an extra ten thousand dollars worth of wilding here to the... to the ESD's $100,000 budget that we've gotten, about $100,000. And as well as $11,000 the previous year. So those are monies that you're saving that's not coming out of the city's budgets. And all we're asking is for 10 off the first of the month on these, I guess, on the...
Retirement?
On the retirement.
Sure.
Yeah. So if you look at the sheet here, the first, '86 to 2004, that's when we actually started at $12. And you go down as we're going through the years. Currently, we're asking for $90. And then next year, 2023, we're going to do it at 100 and then it's going to start coming back down. We're not asking to keep it up all the time. You know, this is a plan that the board that's on this pension, you know, has agreed to. And, you know, we're not trying to get rich off of it. So this is something that we're just trying to catch up with some of the older guys. And the younger guys are going to benefit a portion, but they're just going to come back down. Yes.
Yes, sir.
I misunderstood you last time. You said you were trying to catch up. And like I told you last time, there's no way you're going to catch up, the older guys from the new guys. But now it makes a little bit more sense that you're saying, okay, it's going to come back down. So I just think you just needed a little bit more clarification. Now, this additional $10, where is that coming from?
Actually, it's going to come out of the ESD.
So it's not even coming out of the city?
If you look at the right in the middle section there, currently I submitted $37,000 to the ESD, our $100,000 budget. So we're not anywhere near $100,000 budget right now. And, you know, we're hoping to get there. So without a truck, you know, that thing is not there. So I guess it's hard to spend $90,000 a nickel at a time. So, and as a volunteer.
Well, second of all, I'd like to thank you for your service that you're being doing out there. I've seen you all in action and I do appreciate you all. You know, I do appreciate it. So I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and approve...
Second.
All in favor? Passage unanimously. Thank you. All righty, discussion regarding details for the city council retreat set for June 1st. I guess this is where we need to set items, agenda items, that we need to discuss at the workshop. So we already...
The projects.
The projects, the...
All the projects.
Punch lists.
The punch lists, yeah.
Yeah, the punch lists.
Punch lists.
And then our rules of engagement. And there was something else.
The policy goals and rules of engagement.
Yeah.
Also on that, for the library, it's been booked. So we need another venue either here or at the Civic Center.
Can we hear? Smaller, more conducive.
Maybe last year we had it here.
Beg your pardon?
We had it here last year.
No.
No, we had it, library.
So which one?
Here is fine. The one at Texas.
We do, well.
Here is fine. Just a meeting.
Ma'am, I wanted to add one more thing to the timeline. I think this would be a flip of time to do this one. Once again...
For June 1st?
Yes, ma'am. Once again, on this one. Hope I don't make trouble again.
Well, if you do, I'll make sure you...
Both through Commissioners' Court because
Oh, okay.
These are their ideas and we're bringing them over.
That's fine.
But anyway, there was this individual that approached the Commissioners' Court on a Pierceville vocational training program that he wants to get off the ground. And it's presented to the county and it's presented to the school.
What kind of program?
It's a training program, vocational training program.
Vocational?
Yeah, vocational. And it's a total brand-new program. His name is Renaldo Trevino. And he has like a 15-minute presentation that he wants to give us. And I thought that this would be a flip of time for this presentation.
I've been through it. He had it at the community building at one time. Yeah, I'm talking about bringing vocational to the area. So it's...
They already have it in the school.
So it's kind of up to you guys. I mean, it can be on the item for 15 minutes.
Yes.
Depends on how much we have already. We have a lot.
We have 15 minutes.
Well, it's probably not best for the workshop. It probably best on, at a council meeting, if it's 15 minutes. Let's, yes, so we'll save that for an agenda item on the council. Okay? Anything else?
Yes. The state of the finances, the state of Pierceville. I'd like to see that as well. Because we're going into the budget session, aren't we?
Pretty soon.
Well, we need to know the state of the finances and everything.
State of affairs.
I think we also need to understand how we're doing with personnel, how we are functioning with limited personnel, et cetera, et cetera, in some departments. What's available in the departments? And what is, you know, we need to discuss that because I know there's been a... We've gone from personnel from, I think, 80-something to 90-something employees down to 68 or so. And so I've been here at City Hall at times when there's one person standing at the front here and seven people in line and three or four cars in line. And it's getting to, I think we can review it as a city and a council, what the status of things are so that we can...
Go to the end.
Understand all that.
Mayor, thanks. Yes.
Also, the certifications that the supervisors hold, if they hold any, just because I've had a lot of complaints and, you know, saying that they're not certified, especially with the stuff with our water. I want to know if these lead supervisors or head, whatever you all call them, head supervisors, if they're licensed and certified. And I know some are coming up that need hours by June and they haven't got them yet. So you can see whoever's certified and who's lacking hours to still stay certified. That's what I would like to know.
Ms. Renaldo, that comment you just made, is that true, like the pay scale that you're talking about? The employees', job duties, descriptions, and stuff like that?
Well, we just need to understand where we're at with employees at this point and, you know, what we're doing about our situation. Because we have to deliver services. And it seems like there's only a few. There haven't been quite a lot in some cases. And we need to understand where all our resources are and how they're being utilized by the departments.
I agree because going back to this comment, I don't know if it's you, I don't know, he short-staffed three times for the planning. And I know that, I think we had an employee that was here for 40 years and she retired. And I think that job was split between two accounts. And I don't know who else is picking up some other side. So, yes, we do.
Okay, any other? Not, we'll move on to the item 7. Okay, numbers. Yes, the time for the retreat, 9 to...
9:00.
9 to 4, 9 to 5?
9 to 5.
Lunch is furnished by...
Bring us a lunch.
I mean, I can cook, but... If you have it at my house, I can cook. All righty, we'll all go out to eat for lunch. You pay for your own lunch. Okay. So, item, number 7, executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Chapter 5 by 1, Subchapter 5 by 1.074 and 551.071. A, discussion regarding submitted city manager applications, conduct interviews for a municipal court judge, discussion regarding appointment of municipal court judge, and discussion regarding authorizing litigation on behalf of a rent attorney and new car insurance claim. So, need to entertain a motion to go into executive session, please. I have a second. All in favor? The time is 8 o'clock. All righty. Okay, need to entertain a motion to return from executive session, please. I have a second. All in favor? The time is 9:26. Executive session. There was no action taken in executive session. And also, item A, A8, no action taken on vacant city manager's position. We moving on to item B. Discussion of possible action regarding resolution number 2019-05-03 regarding the appointment of a municipal court judge. This is a previously tabled item, so we need to untable, please. Take a motion to untable.
Motion to untable.
Okay, I have a second. Second. Okay, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. I must say, we had amazing candidates for the municipal judge position. However, only one person can fulfill that position. So if there's no further discussion, we need to entertain a motion to address this item, please.
Madam Mayor, I would like a motion to recommend Mr. Mike Ponce as municipal judge.
Second. All in favor by show of hands, or actually by... Yeah, by show of hands, that'll work. All in favor? By show of hands. So we have three on opposed. So I'm in favor of Mr. Ponce. So congratulations, where is he? Mr. Ponce, you have... Congratulations, you are our municipal judge. Thank you. You're welcome. All righty, so moving on to item C, which is discussion of possible action to authorize litigation. Ms. Britten Trevino has requested that this item not be addressed. So she's not wanting assistance any longer. So item 9, city council inquiries for staff or items for future agendas. Do you guys have anything for any discussion you want to... Any items you want to place on the next agenda? Yes. No, no, that's not going to be on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
No, that's just for discussion.
Oh, okay.
Is this going to be for the special meeting for city manager? Or...
Regular meeting.
Regular meeting. Regular meeting.
I would like to choose our... On the drainage, if you can name one by others.
That's in the... That should be on the punch list.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay. Anything else?
We put the contract of the citizen in the next meeting.
You have two. You need three. Okay. Any other?
I'd like to follow up on the comparison of the economic situations. We have discussed the economic situation in our city. We're going to do a study of tourism for and development office. And also, I think Main Street could be involved in that as well. So getting an update on what's inspired them.
Ma'am, do you know, do you know all the boards apart?
No, they're not. We need, we need our...
Can we review all the boards? The tax board, the accounting board, adjustment board, and all the other boards? You got a mind?
And start taking applications?
Yes, that. Moving on to general announcements. Any general announcements?
General announcements, I don't know if you have noticed, South Roosevelt is already being constructed on. The guys are getting that ready so that way it doesn't start falling down. Hopefully we won't get any rain in the meantime. I know the people have their... They got first base in their competition.
Congratulations. Okay, so that's it. We've got a motion to adjourn, please. Second. For two.